But I'm not hearing feedback.
No, I don't have it yet either. It doesn't.
Seven o'clock. We will call the August sixth DeSoto City Council meeting.
Daniels?
Here.
Hunter Michael?
Here.
Here.
Ritter?
Here.
And Councilmember Lane is absent this evening, Mayor.
Hey, guys, there's some feedback on our side out here.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're on it.
Is that me?
I think it was you, yeah. I don't hear it anymore. You have to disconnect audio.
But I'm not seeing that button tonight.
Yeah, I don't. If you go to the.
They changed it. I surely haven't lost it. Please rise and join me in my pledge, Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item tonight is our consent agenda. We have a minutes from our council meeting of July sixteenth for approval and pay notice number eight eighty-three. Any discussion of the consent agenda or motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried, Mayor.
Our next item is call the public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the council tonight? Uh, okay, I don't see anybody on the Zoom or the GoToMeeting.
Nope.
We will carry on the item three of business. None, so we'll go for A. Consider a resolution approving five-year cars plan.
Yes, Council, this is something we do each year. Typically, it's in the spring, but because of some COVID delays internally and at the county, um, it's only happening now in August. Uh, the Cars is a county program that funds improvements to arterials, uh, roadways throughout the county. Gas sales taxes taken countywide and distributed back. The county does, um, uh, contribute their own general funds to the tune of about three point two million dollars a year. So overall, it's a good deal for us. We get more back out of it than we pay into it. So it's a great program. It's been going on for a couple decades now. Um, I've listed in the staff report some other Cars funding stuff that we've done, uh, Lexington Avenue, Corliss Ninety-Fifth Street. Just, just kind of a rundown of, uh, you know, the past Cars fundings that we've had. Each year they want a five-year plan so that they can program into the future and they want the governing body to essentially endorse that plan with a resolution. So the, the staff report included our current five-year plan and in it, there's only one project and that's the Roundabout Project. Uh, Cars only funds half of construction costs, so that'll, that'll be programmed for twenty twenty-two. We plan on building that. Um, we expect that total project to cost, uh, somewhere around one point one million dollars. Um, so we're requesting about four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from Cars. Um, this is not news to you. Um, it's, it's been the plan all along, really. Those, that cost estimate has come down a little bit, but not materially. Um, I think initially we were, we were thinking half the construction cost might be around five hundred thousand. So this is down a little bit, uh, from where it was, uh, when we initially put it in our CIP. The last page of your staff report includes a resolution that would just acknowledge your approval of the five-year, uh, program. Um, and that's what the county is needing at this time. So I'll stop there. Ask you to approve that resolution on the five-year plan.
Okay, any questions for Mike?
Resolution number is one zero three two.
I'll make a motion, then we approve Resolution one zero three two, approving the five-year city-county street improvement program.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried.
Okay. Our next item is receive report on delinquent solid waste accounts and conduct delinquency hearings.
Yes, Council, um, this is the process we need to follow in order to, uh, place, uh, delinquent solid waste, uh, account charges on, uh, properties, uh, tax rolls. We have three accounts. Um, two of the accounts, the, the second and third accounts, they did pay up. So the only account at issue is Josh Poinkindall. Um, he's not here this evening, so the action we would ask for the council to take is just a simple, uh, motion approving the, uh, report, uh, the twenty twenty report on delinquent solid waste accounts as to Mr. Poinkindall. So if we just do that in a simple motion, uh, we can then assess that amount to the tax.
Any questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion, then, that we accept the report and hearings on the delinquent solid waste accounts.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried.
Okay. Lena, if you could just make sure that the count gets sent to the count.
I will.
All right, item C, consider bids for fence at Public Works Building.
Uh, yes, Council, this will be the, uh, last item that we'll come to you with, hopefully, on this year's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, CIP allocation for improvements at the street shop building. You'll remember those, uh, previously approved, um, works there included the storage sheds, uh, outback and some electrical improvements to them and some gating, um, gating improvements to the main gate, some garage doors and some other miscellaneous things and on the facility. We were saving the fence to last to just see where we had extra money. Um, and, uh, as of right now, it looks like our balance is going to be around twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars of that two hundred and seventy thousand. So, uh, Steve, uh, obtained three bids for the fence work, mostly, we'll just go as far as we can with the, the allocation remaining. But this fence work is, is to replace the chain link fence largely that separates us from the Duncan property just to the northeast of us and then along the front of the building. Um, that fence, especially the one that divides the two properties, has been backed into over the years and it's in pretty bad shape. So, uh, we'll get as much done as we can with the money. But the low bid was a challenger fence and so we're asking for your approval, uh, for, uh, of the challenger fence bid for seventeen three eighty-eight.
Okay, questions for Mike on the fence bid? Or a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Challenger Fence in the amount of seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried.
Okay. Item D, approve twenty twenty-one budget hearing notice.
Uh, yes, Council, so, uh, we, we, we talked about the final, um, budget draft at July sixteenth meeting and I think everybody was comfortable with where we were, uh, with all those allocations and the amount of tax that we're going to collect. The next step would be to schedule the, a for- formal budget hearing. And so that's what this is, um, attached to, is exhibit B of the staff report is the budget hearing notice. This format is the one provided by the state and is required, um, for us to place and advertise in the paper. It, uh, essentially sets the maximum amount of property tax, uh, rate that we can collect, uh, for next year's budget. If you'll remember, that total amounts, uh, comes out to twenty-four point zero two nine mils, um, which is a slight reduction in overall mils from the previous year and the fourth year of reduc-, uh, reducing, uh, mill rates. So if the council is comfortable with this, uh, make a motion approving that budget hearing notice and then we will hold that hearing at the August twenty meeting, um, which will then, assuming approval, allow us to submit that budget to the county before our deadline, which would be August twenty-eighth.
Okay. Questions? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the notice of budget hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of motion? Roll call, please.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried.
Okay. Item E, considering purchase of utility truck for street department.
Uh, yes, Council, this is part of the vehicle equipment replacement program, um, for twenty twenty. This will be our last acquisition of the year. In the spring, we bought a couple of, uh, pickup trucks for the water department. And I think it was last month, or maybe it was in June, we approved the five-year lease on New Backhoe for the street department. The last acquisition is a utility truck in the street department, F three fifty, uh, four by four. Um, you can see in the staff report, I've outlined all of the cost of the program and then highlighted the new acquisitions this year. Um, Ron specked out what he wanted on his utility truck and we've again taken advantage of the cooperative bidding process that's provided through Mark, uh, in order to get the pricing on the, on the pickup truck. Uh, it's a F three fifty four by four. That pricing is thirty-three six seventy-two. We're also going to need a utility service bed put on it. Um, and that is our, our vendor for that we've used for, for years for all of our stuff is American Equipment Company. Uh, that price is eighteen nine ninety-six, so the total is fifty-two six sixty-eight. You'll remember financing for these, uh, the rolling stocks of the pickup trucks and the dump trucks, uh, has come from a loan from our electric utility fund rather than financing these through a third party. We financing, finance them through ourselves. The twenty twenty street department budget has an amount of eighty-seven thirty-four allocated for the first year payment of this, so we can reduce that amount from the amount we borrow from ourselves from the electric reserve. Uh, the last several, I think all of these that we've done so far have been four-year terms. Um, and we have, our policy is to charge ourselves a rate between, uh, the rate that we could borrow and the rate we're getting on investment. So, uh, with the earlier two trucks this year, we've selected a rate of two point seven five. I just recommend to maintain that, go with that two point seven five, uh, again. So the loan from the electric reserve would be a total amount of forty-three nine thirty-four. And then the annual payments for four years starting next year would be eleven seven forty-nine. Uh, in order to borrow from the electric reserve fund, we do need an ordinance and it does need to be passed by a three-quarter majority vote of the council. So, um, the last page in the staff report is that ordinance if you wish to move forward. With this action, um, I'll ask you to authorize me to accept the proposal from Alitha Ford and American Equipment Company and, uh, pass the ordinance authorizing the loan from the electric utility fund.
Will that be two separate motions or just one?
Yeah, should be, if you could.
Ordinance number?
Ordinance number is two four nine four.
I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance two four nine four, authorizing temporary use of up to forty-three thousand nine hundred thirty-four from the electric utility fund to purchase city trucks and related equipment.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Then, um, make a motion authorizing the city administrator to accept the proposal from Alitha Ford in the amount of thirty-three thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and from American Equipment Company in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ritter?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried.
Okay. Item F, consider bids for repaving of Post Oak Drive.
Uh, yes, Council, this is, um, I think, I think it's the last item. We'll ask for your action on the, on the road maintenance schedule this year. Um, we've identified Post Oak Drive and actually Post Oak Drive turns into Post Oak Circle. It's the far eastern north-south drive in Cherished Oaks. Um, base failure areas, lots of transfers cracking, lots of, uh, patching needs to be done and then a full asphalt overlay, um, as we're also recommending on that. So Brad prepared the, the bid documents and went out to bid. In the staff report, there's some layouts of where these cracks are going to be repaired and, um, and the patching areas associated with them. Um, the overlay actually will be, part of the problem with the roads out there is one, the base isn't the best. Uh, when we, whenever we've excavated the complete base, it's pretty much clay. Um, so that's part of the problem. But the other problem is, uh, there's really not a lot of crown to the street. There's not a lot of cross slope to shed the water off of the streets themselves. So the overlay section we've devised essentially builds up the crown in the middle. So we're going to be placing four inches of asphalt in the middle and then two inches of asphalt on the edges. The other thing we're doing is we're milling the edges down, that two inches, so that we don't have this bump, this gap to backfill with earth or the driveways to transition into. The new pavement will be at the elevation of the existing pavement on the edge and it'll be three to four inches thicker in the middle. So that'll give a nice crown to it and not, we won't have this restoration issue. Remember, we've had some projects where we've had to do that. Cornout of Circle was one several years ago. We've had to replace driveway, ends of driveways. It just got to be pretty expensive and, um, kind of painful for the residents. So we've decided to do this. Um, we've done it on one, one street before and it's, it's, I, I'm not exact, I can't remember which one we did it on now. Uh, regardless, I think it'll, I think it'll make for a nice project with minimal disruption to the residents and, um, and really kind of restore the pavement section and provide a little thicker section than we've had before. I think it'll last. Um, we got four bids for the work. The lowest bid is McConnell Associates. They're out of Kansas City, Missouri, for ninety-one thousand and fifty dollars. It does fit within our budget that we have remaining for roadwork, so we're asking, uh, for your approval, uh, the proposal from McConnell Associates for ninety-one oh fifty.
Any questions?
Have we used McConnell before?
We haven't, but they're a pretty big firm. Um, they're.
Are you sure we had, they didn't do any?
I really don't think. I'm not O'Donnell. I don't know, but it sounds familiar, but yeah, the logo's in there.
McConnell's big in asphalt maintenance. They're a big asphalt maintenance company.
Yeah, they do a lot of private parking lots.
Yeah.
And, and facility, Johnson County Community College uses them quite a bit and you see them around a lot.
I think they're doing our office buil-, the office building I'm in this week, weekend.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you do, you see them around a lot.
Private parking lot stuff, but they have done some residential streets around.
And the cracks will be repaired better than Kill Creek?
Yeah, um, I'll see to that. You won't be driving so fast on these, that'll be one. Um.
Well, and they're, they're going to get a full overlay, which will help as well.
Yeah, that won't matter, really. Yeah.
You know, with that granite chip seal, that.
Yeah.
That was unable to cover any, uh, imperfections.
Well, to that end, we've made contract, contact with that contractor to come back and address some of those worst ones on a, uh, on a, on a maintenance bond sort of issue.
Okay.
Because really, I'd say about ten of those are just unacceptable. Yeah, and I don't know if they really sank. They were pretty bad to begin with.
Yeah, right. They should have left them proud and they left them low.
Yeah, yeah, well, so.
We're getting in the weeds on.
And for a good, for a good example of how it could be, drive Ninety-Fifth Street right now.
Mm-hmm.
Our crew went out and did those, lots of transfers, patching.
Yeah.
And two-thirds of them, if you closed your eyes, you wouldn't know you were driving over them. I mean, a lot better, a lot. So it's not like it can't be done, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we're pursuing that with them.
Okay. Yeah, a couple of questions. What's the schedule?
Uh, I, sorry, I don't know the schedule right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't.
But it's yet this season?
Yeah, this year, yeah, for sure. It's construction season, yeah.
And just from knowing the road out there, if they mill two inches at the edge and there is nothing left, which I'm going to anticipate is what's going to happen, you know, when they mill that out, what's, what's the plan for dealing with, what they get into?
Every time you mill anything, you might have something underneath you didn't expect. We, um, we haven't seen, what, the areas where we've patched, we haven't seen anything that was less than three or four inches of asphalt. I think the original construction was a four-inch asphalt. I don't expect that, that we're going to have nothing out there. If we do, you know, we might have to go in full depth.
Rebuild some base.
Full depth, patch that or provide some basin there. But that just kind of comes with milling. I mean, you know, you don't really know what you're going to get, but.
Well, hopefully, that's the case. It's just, I know that, you know, like that big, the big patch there where it hits Ninety-Ninth, I mean, that is just.
Oh, it's just awful. It's hardly there.
All the way, yeah, there is hardly any asphalt there at all.
Yeah.
So, I don't know what they're going to run into. It's also a good, uh, good reason to have good construction inspection when roads are being built privately for public infrastructure.
Yeah. Well, I don't, you know, maybe these roads were built exactly as designed. I gu-, I'm guessing they were.
Well, it could have been built exactly as designed. That's true.
I don't know what the design spec was.
That's all I got.
Thanks.
Good. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve McConnell Associates', uh, bid for ninety-one thousand and fifty dollars, uh, for Post Oak, Post Oak Circle and Post Oak Drive repairs.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Daniels?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried.
Okay, item G, discuss economic incentives policy.
Yes, uh, uh, Council, this will be old news to, uh, three, three of you. Um, so I guess we're talking to an audience of, of two. Um, but we, um, you'll, I don't know if you remember or not, but, uh, last fall, we, um, formulated a, a committee to look at our incentives policy and, and overhaul that policy with the aim to get, um, more specific about the types of, uh, the types of projects we want to incent and, and the areas of town where we want to direct our incentives. I think the overall goal was to use the incentives as a tool to guide development, the types of development to the areas in town where we think be most beneficial, uh, for the city as a whole and capitalize most on infrastructure investments that we've already made and ones that we're thinking about still making within the context of our CIP. And also to be more aligned with the goals and objectives of our comp plan and our strategic plan. So that was the, the goal going in. Um, right now, just for a refresher, our current incentive policy is really a, a listing of all the tools that are available to us under state statutes that we could possibly apply to a new development or, or an expanded, expanded use. Um, and it's a good document. It, it does outline, you know, what's possible, the legal restrictions, uh, that are involved with each one. Has an application form and a process to follow, but really, other than that, it's just kind of a case-by-case, um, consideration on part of the council. So what the suggested revisions, um, we're trying to get at was first to align our goals with what we said in the comp plan and the strategic plan, but also to give some sort of, uh, a, a roadmap to an applicant that comes in with a particular project in a particular area to, to help them, um, and help the EDC or, um, group decide whether something's going to be viewed favorably or not favorably by the council. Same time, we didn't want to completely, um, completely eliminate the possibility of an economic incentive that doesn't fit this mold, but is otherwise very attractive to us and we want to proceed. So we're not ruling anything out, but this does kind of put a focus and a direction toward, um, toward the tool that is economic incentives. And I think gives a thoughtful, um, thoughtful analysis of where we want to direct that, those resources toward. So early on, the, um, the committee and actually, um, Kevin, I think, was the first, you, you, you drafted this incentive policy thoughts. Um, and it's kind of like I, I just said, prioritize the areas and prioritize the types of projects and set specific incentive level expectations for each one, developing on strategic objectives that we've, uh, developed over the past three or four years. So what we did, um, is we came up with, uh, first of all, a, a map. Um, and I attached this map here to the staff report. Um, and this map will be an, an exhibit to the incentives policy revisions. It shows areas of town, um, where we want to consider economic incentives. Again, this doesn't preclude any incentives at all for other areas, but these are the targeted ones, one through seventeen we've got here. And they're targets for different reasons. You know, area one is a downtown area. We have a different reason for want to incite development than we might, uh, want to incite for area eight or fourteen. So, um, accompanying this exhibit is this table, um, and it's an incentives level matrix. So for example, um, area one being the downtown area, um, I've got a column for strategic plans and goals and objectives, or strategic plan, goals and objectives, uh, whether or not it's an enterprise zone. And then the next kind of box over talks about all the possible incentives that are available to us. So these headings here are the, the incentives that are outlined in our existing incentives policy as these are, you know, a toolbox of possibilities. And then for each one of those, we're suggesting a maximum benefit, whether it's applicable or not or the types of, the level of incentive that we would consider for that particular area. So downtown district, up to a hundred percent of public improvement, the public infrastructure can be benefit district. Um, you can TIF something up to a hundred percent up to twenty years. Um, so you can, you, I'm not going to read every box here, but you can see, thankfully, I know you're happy about that. Um, you can see that some of these, um, say, area eight, for instance, um, benefit districts, only fifty percent is eligible. Um, and so, so some of these are, you know, only eighty percent property tax up to ten years. So some of these are, would be incentivized less than others. So, you know, referencing the map and then the, the policy, that's kind of how the whole policy framework and targeting of these areas really works together. Um, so to insert that into our own policy, uh, exhibit, uh, B of the staff report is a redlined version of our existing economic incentive policy. I haven't taken, I don't think I've taken anything out of the existing policy. The procedure is still the same. There's an application form. You meet with staff. You might meet with the committee. Um, you know, some of these require public hearings. Some of them, you know, they're, they have their processes. Um, but I've inserted some of the concepts that are shown in that philosophy document and then referenced by exhibit the, uh, incentive area map and that incentive matrix. One last thing I wanted to bring up, um, somewhere in here, we're talking about, um, criteria for incentives. So these are the things that we're going to be, um, looking toward when we decide on a particular incentive, um, request. It, it references exhibit A, which is the map, references exhibit B in here somewhere as well, which is that matrix. Um, but then it also talks about limitations. Um, and limitations is really where, uh, we had this thought that when we've already expended public funds to provide infrastructure to an area, that's going to be a consideration when we look at whether or not we incentivize a particular development along anywhere. So if we spend a million dollars putting a sewer to a property that otherwise was not developable and that development comes in and wants a three million dollar tax incentive, we might look at that million dollars we already spent and consider that. we might look at that million dollars we already spent and consider that in the, in the context of how much incentive we'd be willing to give. Um, we don't have, and we, we, in this year's CIP, we have fifty thousand dollars for an area plan for the southwest growth area. Um, the thought was, you know, the, the, the area along, maybe along the Ninety-Fifth Street corridor, toward the south and west of Cape Ten and Lexington Avenue, that area up there, to get a, um, a better idea about the cost of public infrastructure that's gonna be needed to fully develop that area. Um, the Economic Development Council wants to do the same sort of thing with areas further west. Um, and so right now, we're working with them on a consultant, uh, scope and fee to kinda do both of those together. And once we have those sorts of numbers, we'll be able to better quantify when we make these decisions. Or, or if we have to make these decisions, we'll be able to better quantify that. So, um, there is something in the works for that area plan, and we'll bring that back later. And maybe some of the other committee members can speak to that a little bit, but, uh, we're waiting on a revision to the, to the, um, scope and fee with a consultant on that. Um, so that'll help us with that whole decision about the infrastructure and considering that as part of the incentive program, uh, money already spent, essentially. Um, I think that's, I think that's it. Um, like the staff report says, committee members, Kevin Hahnemichael, uh, the mayor, and Lori. Um, so allow you guys to add to that, um, as you wish. Uh, it's on the agenda tonight as a discussion item so that we can, uh, refine this a little better, have a discussion, I think, with the EDC group as well, get their input. We haven't done that yet. Uh, but we wanted to get it at least in this draft form to you for discussion tonight.
Okay.
Any questions?
Rob, uh?
Not right off.
Okay, and that's why I wanted to get it out here, so you had time to review it.
Most of it matches up a lot with things we've talked about in work sessions and things like that.
Yeah, and I think that's the key thing I was gonna remind is it really precipitated from the, the planning session we had at Junior College where we laid out a half a dozen or so tasks. So believe it or not, we're accomplishing one of the things we set out to do from the, the Junior College work, uh, workshop, the Junior College. Um, so it, it kind of evolved, as Mike said, with that, that document that was just philosophy where we started by dumping down some ideas and Lori and I talked a little bit on it. And Lori always challenged me on, why do we wanna grow? And if we're gonna grow, what are we accomplishing as a community? And so then it really comes back to how do we tie it to our strategic objectives? And how do we cause somebody who's coming in and asking for incentives to also think about how, how what they're asking for relates and not just how to increase the financial stack of their project? Kind of in parallel, Urban Land Institute's been having a series of, uh, webinars and they, they're every Thursday, or they were every Thursday over the lunch hour for a while, called Building Cities We Can Afford. And I don't know if you've, if you've seen some of those.
Did not.
McCollum, um, Gould Evans, Dennis, Dennis Strait from Gould Evans has been real active in that and looks at Kansas City, Missouri, and Kansas City, Kansas, and they, they look at areas where what is the return on property tax and sales tax relative to the cost of infrastructure in areas? And so as we start looking at some of these areas that are farther out and we think about the cost of the infrastructure coupled with potential requests for tax abatement, you know, when does it get to a point where there is an ROI on it? And so when does it get to a point where it makes sense? And these ULI, uh, programs and, and the analysis of Mid-America Regional Council is doing is there's some projects that make a lot of sense in the long term and there's some that never are going to pay for themselves given the coupling, the, the infrastructure investment and the abatement. So why do it unless it accomplishes something else that you're trying to accomplish? Say, housing or a particular, uh, type of, of job? Or that that project does allow you to build infrastructure, which then creates a boost? Or you just are accomplishing, as we've said, you know, rejuvenating our downtown, things like that, where by allowing areas maybe to continue to be under-invested, you're actually decreasing comprehensive property value of the community rather than creating some investment where you rebuild property value in areas and therefore there is a gain. So we kinda started with that and, um, and then I did meet with, I'd say at the end of, to bounce it off of a couple of other EcoDevo people and talked to Tim, Tim Cowden, KCADC. And it really, and Greg Kendall with Wind dot EDC. And it really does seem like as public gets more concerned about, you know, is are cities just giving money away? Or why are we giving money to private developers? Now, it really isn't what happens anyway, but there's the perception that it is. Um, then there, maybe there should be more, more scrutiny or at least more rationale as to why it's happening. And so that was kinda the idea of this philosophy and, and it got good, it got good responses. Uh, Mike, if you scroll up a little bit, there were a group of bullet points under the strategic, right there, strategic objectives that would receive the highest level. Those you did not pick up in the policy because those are not policy bullet points. Those are debate bullet points that we would have when it came time to consider a particular application. So, you know, it's, those are the kinds of questions we would ask ourselves when we go, well, does that take? We've got that table and is that table applicable then to this particular applicant? Or to this particular project or that, to that particular location in town? So that's just some of my additional commentary on it.
Thank you. Anything you wanna add, Lori?
Uh, not a whole lot, other than I think with taking an approach like this, we're kind of, um, leading the direction of how we want our city to be growing and where our most important areas are that we feel as a council. Um, you know, th- those are the ones that we are ready and willing to incentivize a little bit more than others. So, um, we had a project not too long ago that did not go through and, you know, had something like this been in place, it may have been, uh, saved everybody a lot of work and time and money. So we're just hoping that this gives a little bit more direction. Um, anybody coming to our city to do any kind of investing, um, has a good guideline. Not, not that we couldn't do something off of this. We can always change. Um, and that would be the last thing is that this is, um, it could be changed. It's changing. I guess we use the term fluid or whatever you like to say, Mike, but it.
Don't say living, Doc. You know, I don't.
Not living. It's not alive. It's, it's sitting kinda still, but it could be changed if it needed to, um, in the future as things change and our cities', um, strategic plan and objectives start to change, then these could change based on that. For example, if, you know, we had lots and lots of growth and we kinda run out of space, you know, then we run out of incentives to give people to, we may not have a need to keep doing things. But for now, I think it's fair. It's, um, easy for people to kinda understand and, and put in place. And so I guess that's kinda.
You made the good point. It sets the level of expectation. Somebody coming to the community knows, has a better idea of what to expect, what they can, where we want them to go and what, what they can expect to, uh, receive in the way of incentives to, to start their projects, so.
Yeah, and you know, you mentioned a project that didn't go forward. And I think one way to help evaluate this is to try, is to either kinda look back and go, well, how would we have handled it maybe a little bit different or been able to handle it a little bit differently? If we'd have been able to tie it to our overall strategic plan? Because the flip side is maybe our strategic plan is what needs adjusted if we're, if we're not accomplishing it. The other way, you know, so that's to, to think back about some of those that did occur. And then the other way would be to go, well, what if we accidentally, um, put a roadblock up for something that we really would have wanted? So then you can kinda go, well, what if this kinda hypothetical project came along? How would it fit? Um, and frankly, there are situations where, you know, a type, you know, you can also look around at projects that have come up in surrounding area and you go, dang, we just wouldn't want that here in our community. And we don't have a way to not grant an incentive for it because our incentive plan is just kind of a fill out the application and ask for it. So this, you know, there are projects to say no to.
Okay, uh, Kevin, Ritter, anything to add or questions from?
Well, I think, yeah, mayor, I think a couple of them have already been answered. Um, uh, one of them was, is I, I just wanted to know if we had, you know, with you guys representing the EDC as well, if you had visited with them. It sounds like we haven't yet, but we will, we will. Um, and if, you know, uh, I just wanna make sure that we're not creating a tool, um, you know, that, uh, that won't allow us to, to bring things to town, uh, and grow as well. Um, have we compared this to any other cities that are, that have done the same thing? I mean, are they finding, are they changing their plans? There's similar things like this, Kev?
You can take, yeah, if I can take that, yeah, that, um, Councilman Ritter, that was part of why we wanted to compare it to some of the other, what other economic development organizations are seeing. It's a little bit of a mix between they wish they were doing something like this, but they can't get agreement on tying, on how you tie it to objectives. Or the, the answer is that, yes, they are because of maybe the public question about what, what are we incenting and why are we incenting and, and what are we accomplishing by incenting? So I think this idea that, that you're tying it towards what are your, are you accomplishing your community goals is the way that, um, economic development policies are trending. So we're, we're kinda out, out on the front of it.
That's good. That's good. And then I guess, uh, and I think you, you mentioned this too, is, is the comment on page, appendix A at the bottom, the ground truth, this whole mess, is that when, just me, meaning that you talked to those guys?
Yeah, that was my editorial comment at the bottom. I didn't realize it was gonna get put in, uh, in a public document, but yeah. Ground, ground truthing it or, or, you know, running it by, um, Tim Cowden, KCADC, Greg Kendall with Wind dot EDC, Beth Johnson with Overland Park EDC, to make sure that there's a sanity check there. Um, but to your point about, has anybody looked at it? When, you know, the mayor and we were talking about really the, the appropriate way to begin to roll this thing out is with the council. And so it, it really wouldn't have been appropriate, in our opinion, to have started talking around the community without first discussing this at the council level.
Yeah, that was my direction. I wanted to make sure that the council members that weren't part of the committee were aware of what was in this before we took it to the, uh, EDC for, for their, uh, consideration.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And Kevin, I don't think it's, um, so strict and, you know, completely tied to that we'd be losing any kind of development coming because of what we have on here. Um, I think it's more of directing where we are willing to give more incentive based on where we see the best place for, um, different types of development and, you know, what we wanna see happening first in our community, um, and what we want as best for our community. And that's why we have different numbers and different percentages and things. Um, but again, anything can be, it, it, it's not, you know, a law that can't be changed. It could be adjusted if, if there was a need for it.
No, I think that's, that's, uh, that's fine and I appreciate that, Lori. I, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't making a tool that, uh, that those who had to go out and attract businesses for us to discuss, uh, it wouldn't be able to use or, or it would be, you know, discouraging to those, uh, businesses that were looking at the so. But it, it looks like we haven't changed much, uh, other than, uh, the fact that, uh, um, we've just added a few things. We didn't strike anything out of the old. Um, I know there was a previous plan to this first, the one that's currently, uh, that had some numbers tied to it. Uh, but, but if we're trying to be a leader and, and be out there and out front, um, I'm, I'm with you on Ford.
So are these incentives for existing businesses or new or both? Cause I'm looking and seeing basically the whole Merck property is under incentive options too.
Yeah, so our current policy and even the, the new one would incentivize expansion of an existing business. There's a threshold there, but, yeah, we've always done that and that carries forward through the draft here.
Okay, good discussion. Uh, so we'll take this up again. Uh, well, I guess we'll probably now, uh, we can probably schedule to have this heard by, with, unless there's any dissent from the council. Go ahead and present this to the EDC at, uh, their next meeting or an upcoming meeting.
Yeah.
And then we can look at formally adopting this at some point in the future.
Yep, real good. Yeah, we'll do that. I'll work with Sarah, get that on the agenda.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Mike, do you mind if, one last thing about it is, you know, one of the things that we had also talked about and, and Mike mentioned it briefly is the tie-in of, um, dollar amounts to some of the areas and what are returned investment would, what the return of investment is on those areas. And we thought that, you know, at first we thought, do we need to hold off on going this far with it? You know, presenting this without those numbers and, um, you know, I think we obviously decided to go forward without having all the numbers of costs, basically the cost of infrastructure to all the different areas on that map. But that's why we're really looking heavily to, um, look at those costs in the areas that we were talking about to the southwest of Cape Ten and, um, Lexington Avenue. So that when we do have incentives, the costs of those different areas, ten, eleven, seventeen, six, thirteen, all of those areas, we kinda have a dollar figure. So, you know, um, and after those dollar figures come in, you know, there may be changes on some of the numbers on this document based on what those are gonna be. Um, so those are, that, that, that's why that's really important for us to move forward with that step in what we're trying to do, um, with, with, with those numbers. Do you have anything to add to that, Mike?
Uh, no, uh, other than, you know, I mentioned we're working with EDC on, on a, on a package deal. Um, Sarah and I had a video, a teleconference with a consultant on Monday and, uh, she's reworking the scope of, of that effort to direct it more focused toward exactly what we're just saying, you know, the infrastructure cost through these areas. Um, so they're reworking the scope on that. And of course, that'll be something we'll have to bring back to the council to expend those funds in, in cooperation with the EDC.
Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on. Um, no executive session tonight, so we'll go on to advisory reports. Mike, what do you got for?
Yeah, one thing, um, we have our first public meeting on the Roundabout Project scheduled. Um, we put it out on social media, I think, yesterday, maybe it was the day before. Uh, it'll be Tuesday, August eleventh, so that's next Tuesday at six PM. Um, it'll be all virtual, so, um, I'll be here in this room. I'm not sure the consultant will be. I think the consultant will still be remote. Uh, but we'll start at six and we'll just go, um, as long as people are still there and interested and have questions. Um, we did revise, you know, we, we brought the PowerPoint presentation to you at the last meeting. That's been revised per your comments and thoughts. Um, so we'll be presenting that and then, um, we'll open the, uh, the discussion up for questions and answer. So it, it'll be interesting to see how that goes. Um, our social media posts have gotten some comments, good and bad, on, on Facebook. Um, still seems to be a lot of misunderstanding about, about what it is and why we're doing it and kinda the history behind it. So this was a, it was a good first step to get the public involvement phase out there, uh, started right away, so.
Yeah, and I will say on that, I really like that there's a response that's occurring, you know, the cities, that, Whitney, I presume, is being, being active and that way they know that there's some engagement going on and, and something being heard. So I, I like the response.
Yeah, she's doing a great job with those. She, she, yeah, yeah, she really is.
I didn't really.
Yeah, I appreciated that too. That was, that was nice.
A roundabout expert. I didn't know. She knew so much about.
Haven't studied that?
Yeah.
She had been. Well, I gotta get her to quit calling circles. She called them traffic circles a couple of times. Yeah. Nomenclature.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
Um, no, that was it for me. Thanks.
Okay. Um, while, while you're talking, any update on the county and the distribution of the, uh?
Yes.
Cares Act funding?
Yeah, I did forward the council a memo from, uh, the county administration on that. You know, they, 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 they made a memo. Um, essentially, it's a multi-phased approach. The first phase being reimbursement to the cities for direct COVID risk-related expenses. Um, they have. They have, it's clear they're not just going to sub allocate those funds on a, on a population basis and give them to the cities to deal with. Their account, the county is going to distribute those funds through a process that they've set up. There's a web portal. Um, it's like, actually it's a pretty easy process to go and get reimbursement for funds. So there's two portals. There's one for funds that have already been spent. And then there's another one for things that you want to spend money on, but you're not sure if they're going to be reimbursable. So you want to get their opinion first. So today I made application for about thirty-five hundred dollars worth of. Just masks and hand cleaners and Plexiglas and things that we've already spent. And I also made application for, um, some, uh, tablets for remote, uh, video conferencing for the council and department heads. And some other things that I don't want to spend the money before we know if we'd be reimbursed. Just did those today. The county's, uh, turnaround on that, they're trying to turn around in, in, uh, ten days or less. On an answer about the future or an actual reimbursement. It's not a whole lot for us so far. The issue of personnel costs, any personnel costs for, um. Overtime or first responders or paramedics or, you know, other cities have health people involved. They're not, they're not processing those yet because they want to see what the scale of the reimbursements might be. The county just doesn't know how much the cities are gonna, are gonna want. But once they work through that process, work through the personnel process, then the next phase would be, um. Help to, uh, businesses within the county. So I'm not exactly sure what that's going to look like, but, uh. That's, that's kind of, do you, did you get the, the, the memos?
That you sent last week?
Yeah, it was last week.
Yeah, I got that. Yeah. I just wondered if there was anything further because those were still, uh, I don't know.
Alatho was the first one to submit and they got a approval for about two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars today.
Was that in the county commission meeting?
That was in the county commission meeting.
Okay, I missed that. All right.
And they said there's others. That was just the first one that had gotten in by.
Their reporting.
The meeting time, the, the deadline.
You haven't noticed what kind of stuff they like to teach?
They did not. They just gave an amount. They did not get into any specifics of what that.
We've talked about this. We have a weekly managers meeting. And it really, it sounded like it's just going to be P P E, hand sanitizer, um, Plexiglas, retro, building retrofit. Just, you know, stuff that's just really easy, hard, simple. To, to, to verify through that. You know, the federal guidance, it's about two pages long.
Yeah, right.
That's about it. So, um. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, I mean, you criticize the government for putting out stuff that's too long and now this one's too short, but that's where we are.
Well, the thing that interests me is when I, we, we got to get to the point where we can offer grants to the, some of these businesses are just getting killed.
Yeah. So that'd be the next, that'd be the next phase. And there's not a whole lot of.
Sooner the bet, you know, and that's, that's what's, for me is very frustrating about the county's processes. Because it seems like to me they're dragging their feet so much with the, figuring out how they're going to distribute it. That it, it's going to, it's not going to come in time for some people that need it the most. And that's just, it makes me.
And once the business is gone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause like Tansography's been struggling, a couple of others, just because they can't do business in.
Right.
This environment.
That should be a part of what that CARES funding is there for, and we're not able to access it. And so it kind of, a little frustrating. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Yep. Thank you.
Patrick, anything for the group tonight?
Yes, just wanted to update you on a couple of things. The, uh, acquisition of the recreation property, um, we were moving towards closing. And, uh, when the title company did the, the title research, it turned out that their, um. Anna Ryan, the trustee only had the authority to transfer half of that property. But it's just sort of the, a legal formality that she has her attorneys working on to get that fixed. So we do expect that to still go through. It's just a matter of taking some time to get that done. And then also wanted to just let the council know, um. Patrick Thrasher, who grazes cattle on the, the city utility, he did sign a formal agreement. Between himself and the city that just sort of, uh, outlines, you know, that the city has access. And, and, uh, similar to the other, uh, properties that the city allows longer to. To use. So we'll have that on the next, uh, council.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that that really was the city's property and we were in control of it and. I wanted to exercise our ownership of that property instead of just letting somebody use it without. So thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Lana, anything for the group tonight?
Nothing from me, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council comments and, uh. Kevin Ritter, we'll start with you since you're, uh, remote.
Okay. I, I just, um, it was, I didn't have anything, but, uh, I was going to ask Mike, um. Is there any updates on the security stuff? Is, is it still in engineering or is it in the city's hands?
Yeah, no, it's.
Sold out or what?
Yeah, the engineering's done and I believe, I'll have to check with Steve. I'll get back with you by email tomorrow. I think it's out to bid now and the intent was to get the bids in in time for the next meeting, but I'll, I'm going to check on that. I think it's, I think it's out to bid now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kevin. All right. Thank you, Kevin. Kevin Hahn and Michael, you want to follow up?
I would love to. And Mike, I sent you an email. If you could jump in your email, open it up and click on a link.
Okay.
Will it come back to you?
Uh, no, if you can just, uh. So a little bit of background is, um, one of our, uh. Vice presidents is on a, a American Public Works Association committee. And he had an opportunity to submit an idea for an article for their national magazine. This is A W A reporter, national magazine. So we threw out this broadband topic and they did on it. And so Randy Gordon, the author of the article, interviewed me and Mike and took some other public information out there. And they, and submitted it about a month ago and it came out today.
All right.
So this is a story of how we accomplished the, the broadband issue and worked with, uh, went through the R F P process. Uh, but it's, I think it ended up going, uh, really well and I was very happy to see that it got published. So, um, I don't know, mayor, if you had seen that in any of the A W A.
I haven't.
So, um, you know, Mike, maybe something you can use that Whitney can use and, and push out.
Yeah.
Your quote in there with your, I can't remember which paragraph you're in. It's probably that one.
Well, of course, that's what I was looking for.
Right there it is. The system will not just help us catch up in twenty years. Right there's the administrative, Mike, from our down towards the bottom.
Yeah, yeah.
There it is.
Get ahead for the net. Boy, that's a.
Boy, that's nice quote, Mike.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
Notoriety for, for how the, how the problem's getting solved. And Edwardsville's going through a very similar situation right now. And so I've been talking to Mike Webb and, and, uh, they're looking at following a similar path. I don't know how it worked out with Springville. Anyway, we've got some national level publicity.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Rob, anything for the group tonight?
Don't think so now, at this point.
All right. Lori?
No, I don't have anything, mayor. Thank you.
Uh, well, I don't really think I have anything to add. We're all wearing our masks, so we're doing what we're supposed to do. Just keep wearing your mask, people.
Yes.
And I would entertain.
I make the motion we adjourn. Sucker.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, people.
Everybody have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Rick, you should be getting an email from Eli Vander Creek about.